Just turn nine.
Good morning, everyone. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and then. Order for a approval of the agenda for August first.
Courtney, any additions or changes? I make a motion we approve the agenda for today.
I'll second them.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. And in order for approval of Monday, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
I thought you read right. Well, I'll make a motion approval minutes as presented. I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. All right. First item on the agenda is secondary roads. Good morning, Zach. He's got a utility permit.
Just one utility permit today. This is for Northern Natural Gas. If you might remember about. Three and a half months ago or so, we approved a permit for them producing work. We've been near the intersection, Apple Avenue and three twentieths, the milk of rapids, no east of rapids. They had some issues with the condition of their pipe. And so they were trying to go back to Brian Board and they figured out that they're are going to replace a section of pipe. Um, but putly underneath Apple and three twentieths. Um, I don't know how much further out in private property they they need to go, but I know this. Well, it's not just the valve site that they're going to be working on now. They're going to be actually replacing pipe. So this new permit is for. Then basis with a temporary pipe across three twentieth perpendicular and temporary pipe across Apple perpendicular. So they can either work on putting in the new permanent pipe. So there's quite a bit of work they'll be doing down there. Possibly starting late this week or early next week if you get this approved. They have to get it approved by Green County as well. So. But they it took them a while to get their. Permitting from who they need to from a gas standpoint, um, that's a sort of order who they have to go through. Um, that process took a while for as well. So but. That's what's going on there. What the situation is. It'd be nice to get that. Button down and closed up. Any questions?
Yeah, good. That's a got narrow shoulders on it there.
Somewhat narrow. Um, they got, you know, they they did put some Jersey bear Jersey burial on there to protect that hole that they had and had some. Um, reflective tape and cones to try to let people know, but it's it's.
Kind of a little crown of a hill there a little bit too.
It's not a great situation. I mean, this was supposed to be a they told me a week to two week thing and it's been three months. So. Not real confused about that, but.
Yeah, I have by there. I just miss know the area.
So.
You have any problems with them?
Get more maybe other than just waiting the waiting game, but that is what it is. So but.
I'd make a motion that we approve the utility permit and. For Northern Natural.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition carries.
Thank you. Uh, just one other thing to note, I guess, um, from a. Project standpoint, uh, we are going up and gonna try to finish giving the length world shoulders. East side, east side of the of the road from Lanesboro going south to intersection. We didn't get that done. Last fall, uh, putting the earth shoulder on. So we're gonna finish that, finish that three quarters a mile or whatever it is, and we'll get to. Random shoulders put on that north, south stretch between Lanesboro and Northern Section to kind of finalize that.
Kind of the east side of going straight south and.
Correct. Correct. Yep. So.
Sounds good.
Other than that, that's what's going on. No wash for the time down here. Yes. That's not a lot of complaint. Um, some, some, um, the dry weather is definitely not helping. There's some dust control spots that are are really getting rough. A few which we're probably going to play through this week and try to try to correct. I talked with Jericho, who has most of our dust control. And they're probably looking at coming back mid mid August. So. Two weeks, three weeks when they'll come back. So. Basically, we'll try to hold off on the ones that aren't bad to touch up before right before they come. But there's a few that are. It's the same to hazard. So we're gonna we're gonna try to cut them out. And there's still be some dust control there. It just may not be as good as what it was.
Yeah, this lack of range really creating a death situation everywhere.
It is.
I see that they're. Still lost in the story county lost to you. There's. A loss in the dust.
It's. It's a it's a big deal. I mean, I don't blame people for wanting to have dust control. Um, it's it's just a. The challenge to maintain those areas with.
They get rough, get the bouncing.
Once they start, it's. Hard to hard to quit.
So Nate. So when they get the desk control, do they pay for a season or they pay for a trip?
They pay for the season, which is two applications. So it's it it you can do it one application like if you, uh. Missed it the first time and decide you want to do it the second time, they will do that. And then it's. I think it's. Of course, we believe it's five hundred dollars or six hundred dollars for four hundred feet, something like that. Somewhere in that range for two applications. So it'd be about half that for. Yep, Rainland solves some.
A lot. Yeah, it's pretty hard to even. Grading these roads, you know.
Or we're. We're not. We're we're trying to keep it being getting rough, but other than that, you're. Stay off your roll rocks around a little bit.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Max. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is to approve the flats. Anybody have any questions?
Just rearranging. A creatures.
We surveyed it out just declared by ownership. The horses.
Make a motion. We approve the flat for the day.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Third item on the agenda is approved classy liquor license for whiskey. We're on LLC.
We have had no problems up there. So I'd make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more extension? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Fourth item is the IT quarterly report. Dalton, how are you this morning?
Fantastic. Let me get my camera on here. Sorry, I've been in the meeting here. So down in my office. Um, everybody received a copy of the quarterly report I sent on Friday. I sent out. Okay, cool. Um, try to organize it kind of by department. Um, what we've done this. This actually covers the last two quarters. Um, I had a baby and didn't ever get time to stop in and. Uh, do my other quarterly reports. So this will be kind of a a large one. So I'll go through it as quickly as possible. Um, let me let me know if you have any questions about any of the line items as I go through them too, please. Um, so we made a point to get all the software updated on the deputy modems. The modems are what brings the internet to the sheriff deputy cars. Just made sure that they're secure, but we launched a project to get those all up to date. And make sure all their GPSs were accurate and and reading right when they're running around the county. Did have a new deputy car coming for, uh. John Cret Singer. Um, so he got he got a new car set up for him. Uh, we assisted with getting all the equipment in there, um, ordering everything for the dock, the laptop, getting that set up. Obviously, we've had a pretty big project with the jail. Uh, we ended up upgrading all the desks there to having mounts. Um, so the screens are mounted off the desk. Um, the 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 computer themselves are actually mounted up underneath the desk so they don't draw in dirt and they're not taking up space on on the the desktop anymore. Uh, we ended up doing almost twenty desks over there in the uh, in the in the jail. Um, we added, um, a registry computer. Um, for the entryways, the ladies could, um, register offenders as they come in and do their their checks. Ended up adding another a computer in our master control. That's the room where we control the doors for the, um, the jail and and. The first and second floor. Um. Let's see here. We ended up doing a project where, um, we had. Um, so the whenever the deputies pull up, um, their their camera footage for their, um, like body cams. Uh, we have that automatically upload. Uh, so we were having issues with that. So we ended up have to go back up on the side of the building and fix that. But now everything's working where they don't have to bring their body cams or their car cameras in anymore. As long as they're within proximity of their parking lot, it automatically downloads and it's just pretty convenient for them. We've had a few light issues over at the, uh, at the jail. So, you know, generally like your lighting systems are like electrician could work on them. Well, the newer systems are all IP based. So even like your light switch has an ethernet cable going to the switch. So we've had a few issues with like some timing and, um. Uh, sleep settings on the lights where somebody sit in their office, a light would go off. So we've done we've done some, uh. Learning on that system and have got it where we can actually work on it without calling the vendor. Um, they're pretty upfront when they set it up that the this was gonna be an issue and that we would have to do it. So something we prepared for. Um, so we also, when we there, uh, we moved our fingerprint scanning machine over to the the jail. That's how you fingerprint inmates and it sends it back to the state. Well, when we moved that over there, um, the connection of the state actually, um, is located back in the courthouse. So we had to figure out a way to get that connection set up. So, um, ended up doing some fancy networking and got some fibers ran over to, um. The jail. So we fibered in that, uh, computer, which was a pretty big project to to take on for us. Did the jail interview room upgrade? Um, that I don't know if you're in the if you heard like the negotiations for that when we were trying to get that paid for. It was really expensive through that company way on the east coast. So, um, Pingarit asked me to kind of find somebody else. So I went and, uh, found a company that came out. They installed like a a nice interview room system. So if the deputies at the interview like a suspect or or somebody confidentially, it's it's behind closed doors. Has really good audio quality and they can, um, just download the 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 footage and the audio, um, together right after they get done with the interview. So really nice. Um. We, um, I sat in on the the HVAC negotiations. I I think everybody remembers that. I wish I had her. Um, that was us trying to get the, um, HVAC issues paid for by Shive. We set up an inventory system for the evidence library. Now that's like your physical evidence, like if if they have guns or drugs or something like that, we actually have a nice system now where it's all barcode scanner. So they can grab a barcode scanner, scan the side of the evidence now, and it'll pull up the case right in their computer right there set up in the evidence locker. So we, there's something else we've been working on, um, like a fax solution. So with the new jail, um, when when in the newer buildings, they don't put analog lines in the buildings like, you know, like your old phone lines. So it's all this ethernet cable. So, um, a lot of like your your, um, police software is rely on fax services still like the old analog. Services is how they send out their warrants and stuff. So we had to figure out a way to get that going. So temporarily I set up an efax service. Um, which is just like a website that the the deputies and jailers can log in to send send and receive faxes. Um, but we're looking for a long term solution that we can run through the printers that will act like fax and. Because it's kind of a pain to log in online. So that's that's a project we've been working on, but this this quarter, we're hoping to go to the actual printer style. Fax services again. Any questions so far? I know it's a lot, so. Um, let me jump down to the engineer. Um, we I did a desk upgrade out there for, uh, the the secretary at the engineer, Amy. Uh, so if you walk in there in her office, you can see that she now has the standing desk with a a mounted computer, uh, with with two screens. New speaker and stuff. So her her desk is pretty nice now. And we completed the, uh, camera project out there, um, back in May. So we we have a a really robust camera system out the engineer. I've showed a couple of you. Um.
Don't worry. Let me ask a question on the camera system. Is that. Recorded and live capabilities?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's all. That's all backed up the courthouse too. So that actually, um, runs back to here. So it's all disaster recovery.
Thank you.
Um, let's jump down the conservation. Uh, been doing some work out there. Uh, we. Uh, installed a firewall so that their network is protected and they actually are integrated back with us now. So any computer back there I can talk to from here, just like if they're right next to us. So that's been really nice and it gave us the ability to expand our phone system out there. So Ben and I worked on a project where we imported their phone number into our system. And now all the, um, phone routing for the conservation comes through the courthouse phone system. So they have a a nicer automated system and, uh, can actually dial an internal number to call like me or Courtney. Um, we can call right out there just like they're in the in the office here. Um, we also did a network upgrade out there. Um, I had a contractor pull, um, a fiber cable for me, um, so through the building. Um, this sped up their network tremendously. I added new wireless access points out there. So if you go out to the conservation now, you have really nice wifi signal. It's the same network as the, um, courthouse. So now that you've connected here at the courthouse, you walk out there and your phones will jump on it. So really nice little system and, um. If, uh, one of us were having like a laptop that connected back to the network, I could actually log back in to the courthouse from the conservation now. So. Just. Little integration is nice. Um, working on a upgrading the cameras out there just to get a little bit better cameras. Um, so hopefully this quarter we get, uh, a new camera system out of the conservation also. Um, I upgraded the projector at the conservation. Um, we've had a couple of meetings out there. Dean's got to use it. Um, but I'm hoping to, um, to work with, um, a contractor to get the system a little bit more robust where we can integrate their speakers and, um. Have the the audio quality a little bit better, but I think and then they'll have a a pretty nice system out there, a nice meeting room. Um, comm center, we've done a lot of work for. Um, we've changed out their battery backups to a a newer system. Um, this was in preparation for that generator cut over that we did with the new jail. Um, so we came in at like four in the morning and and, uh, did the preparation. We we moved the, um. Call center to, um, Jefferson. So nine one one calls are actually routed to Jefferson. Um, so that was a. A good test project, um, because we, uh, we were able to test some, um, disaster recovery services that we've we've never been able to test for. But everything went good. Um, the the call routing went good. We were getting nine one one calls like we were sitting down here. So. That was kind of a a fun project. Um, moving on, let's look at, um. The freaky building. So I I've been doing some work out there. Um, I also did the firewall upgrade out there. It's kind of like I did out the conservation so they can connect back here. Um, and then their phone system was upgraded also, um, just like the the conservation where they now have the phone system that can, the calls are routed back here. The automated system has my voice now. So that's that's nice. Um, Veterans Affairs. Now. We we have, uh, also did the, uh. A lot of cable installation out there. So we had to run some ethernet cables to be able to add phones like in the break room and stuff like that. So. Um, instead of hiring somebody, Ben and I just ran the cable since it was just, um, some small projects. Um, and then obviously we've opened up the, um, the public health department through Carroll County. Uh, so Ben and I've been doing some work getting, um, some laptops set up, um, the printer. Uh, we got the the public health P PC set up, uh, there on her desk for Maggie. Got her into the new system, got her accounts all set up. She, uh, has taken that and done a really good job so far. Um, obviously, we we help a lot with election. Um, we we did all the election prep for the laptops. Um, Ben and I did. So we did the setup for those, the preparation, and then on election day, we obviously did, um, the support. So. Um, the day before election, I go out and usually set up a couple precincts. Um, Manning's easy for me. Templeton's easy to to grab. So, um, and then I usually help take a couple down and bring the equipment back to the courthouse. So. We, uh, cleaned up the rack there in the treasures office. That's where, um, all the computers plug in. Uh, so that actually, if you look in the back right of the treasures office where Pat sits, you can see it's kind of cleaned up there in the corner with the network switch and stuff. Um, that was a product that came in on Saturday and spent eight hours work on. So that was fun. Um. Let's see. You guys approved my camera project. Uh, I have some cameras coming here in the next few weeks. So I'm hoping to start getting, um, some new cameras here in the courthouse. With the next few months and get that, uh, camera system swapped out. Obviously, we got the the new HIPAA. Company approved. Uh, Courtney and I both kind of agreed that we we were gonna look at different options. John had suggested a company the, um, before and we ended up going with that. Um, been really happy with them so far. I've been working with Gary Jones. And, uh, communication's been great. Uh, it sounds like we got some, um, onsite onsite and some remote training that we're going to be setting up soon. Uh, so that way, uh, people who have contact with HIPAA data has the proper training and, um, just kind of knows how to handle. Better. Um, we did our office through sixty five renewals, which is just for like email. And obviously, we we do the resets for all the passwords and stuff like that. We get a lot of that throughout the, um, throughout the year. Um, we don't allow electronics recycling. Um, you know, when I I I took over the, um, IT director position. These two back closets here, um, were full of like a lot of old computers. The problem is you can't just throw them in a dumpster. They, uh, the hard drives and things like that have, uh, information on them that could be sensitive. So, uh. Thankfully, I had an intern that was here. He spent a lot of time destroying hard drives. I spent a lot of time destroying hard drives and sort of been. And we've moved all that equipment out and got it taken out to the dump. Um, all all the old screens and everything like that are out. Thank God. So. Did have a lot more room back here in my server rooms for storage. So it's been nice. The the courthouse, we've been working on that self cellphone booster project. Um, you approved the. The second, the second leg of it to expand it out to US Cellular and Verizon, which is going to happen this month. We, uh. I've been really happy with AT, um, AT and T first net part of it. Jason and, uh, all the deputies obviously have those phones. So. Very well attest how good the signal's been throughout the courthouse is just like you're seeing it outside. So, um. In the next couple of weeks, expect to be able to use your cellphone anywhere in the courthouse besides, obviously, the second floor. So. We've been working on some automated dorm maintenance. The front door seems to have a lot of issues, uh, where like the hand scanner doesn't work. So, um, between Zach and I have been. Uh, trying to keep that fixed and working with a a vendor to get that working. Um, I think it's pretty much fixed now. Um, we did have some issues with an unlocked schedule. Where, uh, the unlock scheduling it get updated for the year. So on July fourth, the door is wide open. So luckily I came in and got that, um, closed and, uh, the schedule's all updated for that now. Um, we did, uh, you're sitting in the new meeting room, obviously. So I moved the projector and the, uh, owl system that you're, um, looking at right now. Um, that was something we did here in the last few months, obviously, since we're doing the scanning project on that ground floor meeting room. I did attend ITAG conference, uh. And something important about that, we we use a like a remote management system to do all the updates on our computers. And to be able to jump into them from anywhere. So I ended up doing a presentation at, um, ITAG for that. And the IT directors from from all the counties said in on that and we were able to show like a software that we use for the county that makes our lives easier. Um, there was a lot of interest in it. So it's good to see that Carroll County can, um, kind of spearhead something like that and be the example. So. Any questions? Yeah. All right. Well, that's probably all. Always. Um, yeah, you can see that by looking over the hours, but it's 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 been fun. Uh, Ben and I both enjoying the. The new stuff we've been taking on and we we've learned a lot in the last six months. Uh, you know, it next week I'll know more than I did last week. So. So it always a new experience every day here.
Well, we appreciate all the hard work.
All right, guys. Appreciate you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks, Dalton.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to discuss. I have the freaky building. I think everybody received an email this first. We. With some explanation and some pictures. Carrie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
So I've got, um. Does everybody have the cost?
Yeah.
No, you got that email?
I.
Yeah, I've got otherwise.
They were saying like a thousand dollars they want, right?
It was like. Right at a thousand. And, you know, we can pay for it out of our maintenance lines from the buildings.
But is that the total bill or is that just, uh, county share? Those are total bill.
That that's for the signs. That's to buy the signs. And I think Zach is. Was gonna put them up. So.
These three stands and signs.
Yeah, so there was pictures.
Yeah, I get this picture.
So, yeah, the it's gonna be on a post. So they're gonna be on posts and and, uh, yeah, they're gonna be in that rock. That's. There, if you look at this one, you can kind of.
Courtney actually sent the pictures.
Yeah.
That Thursday?
Uh, I think so. Came in on, uh.
Friday.
Friday.
I saw those, but the original quote, this one I was looking. Okay.
Well, you've got. Yeah, you've got that. Well, sides have been needed over there for years, to be quite honest with you. Been an issue. Um, that's a tough door to find. I'm not gonna deny that.
Well, I think there's money in the building maintenance budget to pay for this. It's not gonna require a budget amendment or anything like that. I just. Because of the dollar amount, I thought that they should maybe discuss it first. I think there was just a couple hundred dollars. We probably went just on it since the money's there, but.
And originally, I think the, uh, you know, there was grant dollars to cover, cover the signs. With the exception of, once we put the veterans affairs. On there. Then. The grant obviously can't pay for that. So. That can have eliminated that option. So.
Great. Have you jumped through the hoop with the city? Is there any obstruction? Things that we might run into there viewing coming out of the bank or coming out of?
Uh, I don't know. I think the location of the signs should not impede any travel.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so, but.
The north looking south, you wouldn't.
Uh, well, I think for the raptor, probably not going to be an issue.
Okay. No, I just didn't know.
If this was gonna be, I I thought that.
I can check, but I don't. I don't think there's an issue. It's on the first building property and not in the right way or in the alley or something like that or not sticking out. So that's maybe would hit it, you know, driving through that because it's narrow. And a lot of times when I go there, you know, the lawn care service is taking care of the base. It's parked along there, which makes it even more narrow. Um, so, yeah, it would definitely not. Be a good idea to put it anywhere where.
Right.
It's getting teed traffic.
I I I don't see anything, but.
I don't.
Never know what the rule. But, you know, if 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 the signs would have been like, say, if you're looking at at this. One here, like if they would have put it here like down in the, the north end of the parking lot, then that could have been a concern, yeah, but.
Up here, I.
Yeah.
The only question I had or concern that I had was, would we be able to?
Say that, move, say veterans affair was, would move to the courthouse, can you remove it, and we, that just, we had that discussion, and.
Cause you know how they do those signs, that's got almost like the little plaques underneath it? I didn't know if that would be an option or not, just in case if something moves.
It would add to the cost, if, if, if that happened, you could just. Yeah, put a piece of tape over it or put something over it, white it out, yeah. The other thing that you asked about was, um had we reached out to other vendors, and Becky said that she called.
A few of them.
Yeah.
I saw the sign.
I saw the sign and, and she says, she gave her the information, and then she reminded her twice.
Well, she tried, yeah.
Is that kind of what you heard?
Well, I get that, we get that on a lot of stuff, or we're trying to get multiple bids, it's sometimes it's hard to even get a bid, yeah.
As long as you try, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's.
And this is a local vendor, so.
I did see though, the one other thing is the labor, but Zach's gonna cover that. Anybody have any other questions?
I would make a motion then to um approve the uh, the freaky building signage. Project.
There's a motion, we need a second. Is there a second? Alright, there's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alright, next item on the. No, you're good. Yeah. Alright, next item on the agenda is manure management annual updates, and we have three of them. From Falcon Finisher Farms, added acres, crop rotation or optimum yields and used manure analysis. EV Pork, Barron's, section twenty-seven, Roselle Township, used manure analysis. And Robinson, Clucky, section thirty-five, Eden Township is the original plan. Last item is committee reports.
I can go first, um. This last week, I signed contracts for new opportunities on the and. Uh, had a lot of different phone calls and different stuff, but that was extended. This week, I think there's a CADC meeting Tuesday, and that's all I have this week at this time.
Next, I didn't have anything scheduled last week, and I actually don't have anything scheduled.
You did. And you do last night, you did.
I have news. Certainly would let me go next, that would have included that, but she was again. Last week, I attended the board adjustment meeting for the Landis Moving Man Hydrus. And then this week, I have RSVP, and foster grandparents.
I can go next, um on Wednesday, had the board of health meeting at noon. Um, new opportunities discussion was uh about the, you know, the formula situation. Really hasn't gotten a lot better throughout the country, even with the opening of the habit. Plan in, in Michigan, it's a catch-up game now, and there's also the. Uh, free uh child's health clinic is August ninth. And you can see here, you know, they, they cover physicals, immunizations, dental screenings, vision screenings. Development screenings, haircuts, lead testing, health insurance info, uh for those, so. The biggest uh thing that they have a hard time covering is the haircuts, they can't get. Barbers or hairdressers, they do have two that are coming in so far, hopefully they can get some more. Um, and they also on here, you'll see immunizations, they will also be doing the immunizations if there's any needed. Um, the board of health did have a um, did have a uh. A, a survey that uh they passed, or it was on line, but it was immunizations. Um, qualifying, qualifying immunizations for admittance into schools and. Basically, uh everybody had to about ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent. Um, completion rate, um the only one in Carroll County was the Prophial School, had about ninety-three. And that's kind of obvious, that situation, but otherwise throughout the county, it was very, very, very good. Um. Oh, let's see. Uh, stats and reports, uh we get, we get the stats and reports and, and this'll get. Less as we go on, because a lot of the uh, um situations will be covered, you know, I, I, the mental or the uh. Public health is, is going in the direction of, you know, they want to get. Um. Families uh who had counted, counted on probably um. The public health in the past for immunizations and stuff like that, they want to direct them to a provider like. San Anthony Clinic, Manning Regional Hospital, um McFarland Clinic, so that they have a doctor, and. Because of the ACA, there's no, there's no cost to that, so that's where the push is, just to get them in that direction. Uh, the reports will, will get less as time goes on. But the focus will be more on population-based and getting the word out more, you'll, you'll see more, more um. More of that, um the COVID. Uh, COVID uh situation in Carroll County is on the rise, uh two nursing homes reported. That they had um. A good number of their patients or clients or residents um. Had, had COVID, all in one of them, there's two nursing homes, one in Carroll, one outside of Carroll. All but ten in one of the nursing homes, all, all but ten of the residents had COVID at the time. So it is kind of an issue going on with the older people um in the county. One thing that um, you know, in this good, this, this is uh, with the public health, we, we talked about um. Uh, reduction in premiums for insurance because of incent- incentive for wellness. This is something that we can talk about, you know, insurance meeting, which.
That's really something that can get out there.
Yeah, yeah, um it ended up being a fairly long meeting, we discussed a lot of things in depth. Uh, one of the biggest concerns by one of the uh, um. Board members was to make sure that we get everybody immunized, immunized who needs to be immunized. Yeah, as far as the children. Last year, so and.
There's some biting on through some.
No.
Yeah. They just didn't get it covered last winter.
Well. Yeah, so I, I think there's been a lot of issues, to be quite honest with you, and Zach can probably vouch for this, it looks like these have looked that way for. Quite some time, I mean, they're cedar trees, you know, you can get cedar trees to look pretty bad, and so I, you know, I would kindly.
But are they wild trees?
No, actually. Zach's got a document that says from uh back in the sixties when that road was graded. His, this individual's father requested that the trees did not be desert disturbed. Correct?
Yep. I mean, try to be safe, when, when right away was purchased, initial right away purchased in sixty-five.
So I don't think there's an issue there, but it's, it, just again, it's, you know, we went out, I talked to the individual and, you know. He said that he was, this issue was not finished as far as he was concerned, he's gonna have a next step, so. I don't think anything's gonna come up, but. Anyway, um that was my week, I have nothing this, at this point in time, we'll see how that goes.
You know, her ex teehaw, yeah.
No, probably why.
We have the person coming for the request from the cemetery at that, okay, yeah, that's all, and it'll be up. Okay.
Everybody just to know when you.
I had nothing last week. I, I did do that, uh and this week I have CADC, uh and. Courtney, thanks for sending that the, on about uh the insurance, would you get a chance to see that yet? He's.
I almost sent it to you too, I thought we could come up with a date.
I am open, either one of those dates are fine with me, so I'll leave that, defer to lean and the rest of the committee, because I'm, I'm okay. With either one, just tell me which one so I can get it blocked off.
Alright, I will uh forward that to Zach and Jamie then.
Great, great. Yeah, that's, that's very good.
So we have the cemetery, what's building, and I'm gonna have you, since it is a building, I'm gonna go ahead and have you add that to the agenda, and if you want to. I can.